Six o'clock, we'll call the D need to order where everybody stands for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic of our citizens, to one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we opened the public hearing last week and we'll.
You're gonna have to speak up for the being here because of that.
We turn that furnace off.
Turn it off.
Well, you can go to talk louder.
I know, but we could turn that furnace off too. If that thing gets louder now, just turn that down ever. Should go off. Um, so we opened the public hearing last week, we did not close the public hearing. We're continuing the public hearing till tonight. Uh, we have the ability to continue it past tonight. This budget has to be adopted by state law by November twentieth. So we will continue the public hearing uh now. And this is the time for the public to talk. If you wanna raise your hands, we'll take everybody in order, but how you wanna do it. We have X amount of seats in this room, if there's gonna be more people than we have seats for, then we're gonna have to ask people to talk and then go outside. Because we can only allow so many people in the room legally. But it looks like we're okay for now. So we'll continue the public hearing as of now, anybody would like to speak?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Have to speak up Mike, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'll step on it. Um, we should turn that fan off, it'll be easier in the room. More expectable, um. We've been the last week or so, and I don't know if anybody really has almost three hundred signatures here from people that care about the town of Alexandria. Their roads in the winter, their roads in the summer, what we have done and what we're going to do. I really hope that you guys and Sandy listen to what the people have to say in the town of Alexandria. Stop the ridicule, stop the defamation.
Mike, this is about, this is about the public hearing, this is about the public hearing for the sake.
Do I have three minutes?
We're not calling people names.
Did I call anybody names?
Yes.
That's called something?
Just deal with what we're dealing with if you would.
I got three minutes. It's time to work together. These people want the right thing. Please start. These signatures are all here, I've been through them. I've crossed out the people that we feel aren't acceptable. Please feel free to read them.
Yep. Okay.
It is about the people, and it is about tonight.
Yep. Anybody else, next?
Yeah, I got something. You feel the ground shake?
No.
That's Cliff and Brockland and my father rolling over in their grave. My father was superintendent of highways for fourteen years in fifty-eight to seventy-two. Back when the roads were just sated on curves, intersections, uh hills, and bus turnarounds. With a railroad policy now in place, there's no way our town can have safe roads without qualified people. And we got qualified people. As every time we turn around, those taxpayers seem to think, what the hell is going on with their town? The, the, the kind of vendetta you have against Tibbles and Huedon. The taxpayers are sick of it, we sent you a message, clean it up. I'd like to take a poll tonight and find out where's Ronnie Thompson? Who had the idea of applying instead of electing the highway superintendent and the town clerk? I wanna poll ya, did you? Huh?
Yeah, that was already been decided.
You're a veteran of all things, and you are too, and you are too. You three oughta be ashamed of yourself.
We allowed the people to vote, and the people spoke very loudly.
Yeah, they did.
And we respect that.
I'll tell you what, next November, I'm gonna be sitting up here one place or the other, either supervisor or town clerk or town council. I'm running, pal. I'm sick of your bullshit.
Next.
As far as downsizing the crew at the barn, back when Tommy Elk was there, they had two guys on nights, eleven guys on day shift, I believe.
Yep.
And now you're down to nine guys, you're trying to cut it to seven full-time.
That's true, right, Dad? That amount?
And I just, I don't understand, trying to downsize, you still want same roads plowed? Uh, it's gonna, it's just, it's gonna take longer trying to find reliable part-timers, especially with licenses that can drive?
Mike, when you, your first year in office or your first two winters in office, how large was your crew?
Oh.
I figured that when Dean Smith was still here, you were dealing with eight people?
We had still had a night crew for a while, I think there was, I think Jerry had thirteen people working.
With the park divers meeting?
Yes.
Meeting all the other guys that worked for the DPW?
Yep, and most of those wages come out of the highway. Um, I believe, not to correct anybody, I believe we had twelve full-time employees when Dave Ban was there and two part-time employees at night. Jerry had, I don't know, it was, it was on and off, uh, we counted it at about thirteen people altogether. We're, we're staffed with nine men. Um, we did Crim's Point, we were told by Dale Honeyman that it could never be done and by various other people. Uh, Crim's Point turned out okay, it'll be even better if I stay in office, it will have a hot, inch and a half of hot pot on it. Um, we did a bridge, right gentlemen? We did a bridge with a great help from the county. For less money, we did the whole road for less money than was allocated to the predecessor mine. Um, not saying anything bad about it, we saved the town money, a lot of it.
I'm thinking about, as I said, the first two years that you were in office, when before Dean Smith retired and you had eight guys. Dean Smith retired and we had the meeting in the back room back here, and we hired two additional guys. One of them took Dean Smith's position, and one of them was an additional worker for you.
Was, one was Zach. Yep, one was Zach with Bobby Calhoun. Uh, we had a night crew, two guys at night, we had Miles and Tracy and Jay working also with those people.
Now, I remember your first.
I eliminated, I eliminated.
Yes.
Those people.
Yep.
And I wanted to try to save our town money.
Yep.
Um, I know this state road thing is coming up, I think Bill and Tom and everybody in this room can attest to it. You ain't making no money on state road. The county road, we get one hundred and ninety-three thousand a year. The amount of times that we're on that road is minimal compared to what it was on the state road.
Yep.
Nobody has ever called, we go out and we plow as necessary like our town roads. Nobody talks about how much money I'm bringing in on the county road, because I don't want anybody to know.
Well, I wanna say right off here in the, in the beginning that, you know, I've thought about this a lot, I've talked with Mike quite a bit about this. Uh, there's been a couple of options that I've thrown at Mike, some compromises. And, and I'm only speaking for myself, but the compromise that I talked to Mike about was not laying these two guys off and having the workforce at the Highway Barn reduce through attrition. Meaning attrition having three possibilities. Attrition being through retirement, attrition being through somebody quitting or being terminated, and attrition being through medical reasons. If somebody leaves for any of those reasons, then you have the right to hire and fire, and we are the appointing authority. So that, that's what I would like to do. Again, I'm only speaking for myself, and the other board members are gonna need to speak here. But that's what I would like to do, I've talked with you. You told me that you would, that was be fine by you if we did it that way. It doesn't mean that it's gotta happen in two thousand twenty-one. That means it happens when it happens. People decide to retire when they wanna retire, or when they're, they've got their years and, or whenever whatever happens to make that. So they make their decision to retire. That's, that's my feelings, I've been saying that for a couple of weeks, I've talked to one or two of your guys about it, that that was my feelings, I didn't say it was gonna happen, cuz I'm only one vote. But you, you told me that you would be willing to sign a piece of paper that said it could happen through attrition, is that still stand?
Gentlemen, we've talked about this, and you guys feel like that? At this time, every one of my men, every one of my men will stay there until something happens, correct?
I can't hear you, but, every one of your men what?
Every one of my men will stay in their positions until something like that happens, agree? Right? I will not lose any men until somebody dies or retires or whatever.
Or leaves for a medical reason, or is, or is, or quits on their own.
Okay, anybody that leaves for a medical reason, that job is held for one year.
Is held what?
It's held for one year if somebody leaves. I think Tommy had to leave for six months, that job was held for six months legally, okay? And, um.
So if somebody leaves for a medical reason in the middle of the year, then you're, you won't?
I got six months to make that decision.
You got, you got the remainder of that year, or you got six months depending on when it happens?
I believe you can't fill it for years a year, Tommy.
I, I think that's what he told me.
Yeah.
Data incident.
Yep, data incident.
That'd be the only thing that makes sense in that point.
Yep, and, and I will agree to the attrition, people, okay?
Mike, if I. So after that person leaves, okay, person leaves for a medical reason, and they leave in July.
Mm-hmm.
You hold that position or fill that position for the remainder of that year?
That, that position is held for one year. If it's a medical deal and he can come back in a year or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
To hold that job for him.
Yeah, I'm talking about if they can't come back.
If he leaves completely, what I just get through Sam, we will, we will do the deal.
Yeah. I, I understand what you mean, because I'm talking about if they can't come back.
Okay, if they can't.
Whether it's six months later or a year later.
I gave you my word, I've already talked to the gentleman about it. Um, but tying my hands right now is a catastrophic situation. I, I, again, I asked, come and, come and get the truck. I've asked Sandy in the numbers, we had a great conversation the other, a week or two ago. Come and get the truck. I'm sure nobody on the board has been in a blind and snowstorm in the middle of night. Whatever.
Okay, George?
Yeah, um, I just, I wanna see the end game here, like, why are we talking about nutrition and getting rid of these guys to begin with?
Our, our biggest reason is I think the board feels as a whole that we don't need the number of guys in the summer.
You're, so you're talking five months out of the year, where you're depending on good weather to do million-dollar projects, shared services projects with other townships. Commitments that you make and receive need to be returned, and you're talking about doing this on a minimal staff basis? How do you take care of our town and the town next door at the same time? You can't do that with five guys, you can't do that with six guys. We said last meeting that it takes a minimum of five personnel on the ground, that's a bare bones minimum.
If it's reduced by, if it's reduced by two, we're not five or six, we're seven.
Okay, let's, you know.
We have, we have four big trucks that we haul blacktop for other towns and for ourselves.
There's, there's.
And we have two mowers.
Brent, if I may, there's other jobs than hauling blacktop for the town of Orleans or Clayton or anybody that need to be done here. And you're asking these gentlemen, future ladies, possibilities to do this on a minimal standard. You guys are asking for a lot and giving nothing. I can have the best truck, the best equipment, but if you got nobody to run it, it's worthless. You might as well just kick it to the curb. I, I don't understand why you're talking about getting rid of the union shop and bringing in part-time help to fill a position. You're willing to pay them more money to do the same job as these gentlemen at this rate right now? All for the fact that you just wanna save a little bit in healthcare and retirement, like, I don't understand that. Who wants to come here for a, a, a five-month gig and never know if you're gonna make it back next year? I, I just don't understand why we're talking about getting rid of these guys, when in all reality, we should be increasing the workforce. You said it right at the beginning, right at the top of the hour, you went from thirteen, fourteen to a steady nine right now. Which everybody here is, is know it, Cooney's out with medical issues right now. Okay, there's two gentlemen that have been sitting here on the chopping block, let's say. And yes, you say you don't wanna get rid of them, but in the long run, you're talking about getting rid of them.
Not, not the guys we're talking about, talking about getting people that wanna leave.
Why would anybody wanna leave? They came here for a purpose, one of them left.
For retirement.
Career. What do you mean for retirement? Alright, so you have two guys that are ready for retirement, correct? So when they leave, you're willing just to get rid of that job entirely? And then depends on, I don't wanna say part-time help, but that's essential what you're leaning on, is you're, you're going for a full-time position with no benefits or retirement, but you're gonna make more money doing it. That doesn't work for people these days, every, everybody out there knows that, that does not work. Nobody would be willing to take that offer.
You think we're supposed to keep staff on in case town Orleans needs a trucker?
I'm sorry?
You think we should keep staff on in case another town needs a help?
We could've worked all summer.
Are we trucking business?
You could've worked all summer.
We could've worked all summer.
You know that, everybody out there knows that.
And, and LaFarge was still working in our town. We could've made that money back.
Yeah.
And I was told, no, you're not bringing anybody back, in fact, we're gonna lay more men on.
I, I just honestly wish that there would be a different conversation than nutrition or getting rid of something or that's not, that's not the goal here. You can't have better with less, that's not gonna happen, we don't have that capability, we don't have the money to do that. We don't have the million-dollar grader out there doing it and the guy to run it. We have a nineteen forty edition John Deere that goes out there and does the job and nobody to run it. You get rid of two more guys, you're gonna have nobody else to run it.
Okay.
I just, I, I feel like you guys are going in the wrong direction when it comes to this. And I would, other than holding Mike to a piece of paper and saying, sign this, that you agree to this, there's gotta be a better way.
Speaking of, uh, working all summer, didn't you ask Mike to furlough guys so that that would help the two thousand budget? Twenty-one budget? So you asked Mike to furlough either six guys or three guys to the end of July, to the beginning of September, or whatever, and he agreed to that, and so did the men.
Yep.
And that's supposed to help the budget, so.
It did help the budget in two thousand twenty, and that's what it was designed to do. For that year that we had a sales tax loss because of the pandemic. Now we're, now we're trying to budget for the next year, and we have no idea what's gonna happen with this pandemic. We haven't, my conversations with Mike is our, that if this thing comes back and it's a problem, and we're gonna lose a bunch of sales tax again, he's told me that he'll sit down with us again, and we'll work up some plans to see what choices there are for him and for his, his men to make sure that we stay within our budget.
That's a whole different situation. That's a whole different situation, the money that we save, me and these good men should go in the fund balance and should be used for next year.
Yes, I agree.
And I believe we were all told that.
It go, it goes into the fund balance, whatever is its better is saved, will go into the fund balance, right, Nepal?
We had to put, we had to put things back so far that some of my bills that haven't been paid to suit gold, I can't get that money now until next month, because I, because of the payment schedule on that. Um, so it's gonna be, you're gonna have, and that probably has nothing to do with tonight, I'm sorry about that, but. This whole thing is, is pulled way, way out, and, and it started from day one. And I'm completely sorry I ran for election, because there's gentlemen that sit on that board right now that have been trying to destroy my men and to try and take me out of office. And, and for God's sakes, every man in this room, every lady in this room, I hope, wants to see that come to an end. Please, stop it. And it's, and it's for nothing but retribution of who I hang out with or who I have friends with, who I've been told not to have friends with.
As I said, Mike, I'm, I'm willing to compromise.
I'll, I'll.
I understand your concerns, and I understand that two local guys losing their jobs is, is a bad thing.
It's a terrible thing.
Yeah, I understand that, and I, and I agree with your feelings there.
Thank you. Well, my wife and, and my wife would like to read the letter here.
Well, I'm sure they all got it.
Yeah.
It's, um.
But I'd like to have everybody here know.
It's from Chris Clapper. From the school.
Yeah.
We all got it?
Yeah, we all got it.
Let the people hear.
Yep, we all got it.
And what did you think about that?
I talked with him on the phone actually, and I asked him to write that, cuz we had a long conversation. And the most valuable information that I felt in that letter that I got from him was the fact that they have advertisement twenty-four-seven for a long time looking for part-time bus drivers. And they cannot fill them.
Yeah, yeah.
And they, I thought he told me they were twenty dollars an hour positions. In his letter, he said they were eighteen fifty and twenty-two dollars an hour that they'd advertised, okay? We, as you know, had felt the part-timers, we would pay twenty dollars an hour, so we'd have a better chance of hiring part-timers. After I talked with Chris Clapper, I went to, I sent an email to the board members, and I said, they're advertising, you know, every day, they've been doing it for months, he told me. And they can't fill the positions they need to fill down there. So that's one more reason that I don't wanna lay these guys off.
Okay.
But would the rest of the people like to hear the superintendent of schools?
Yes, we would. Hey, this is the letter that went out from Chris Clapper, and it went to all the board members. Um, it says, "Good afternoon, I appreciate having the opportunity to email you." The town, Alexandria Town Board, with a few thoughts for your considerations. I've recently been informed that two full-time drivers may potentially be eliminated from staff and that two part-time drivers will take their place. While I'm aware that financial constraints oftentimes drive considerations such as these, it is my decision, it is my concern that this decision may have been made in haste and without considering how it can impact our school community, not just our regular community. In a typical year, a school bus fleet and district vehicles accumulate, on average, two hundred and fifty thousand miles on district roads. Any morning that we wake up to ice snow, blowing wind, overloaded branches, or otherwise dangerous conditions, Mike Tibbles works closely with our garage in an effort to safely plow roads for student pickup and drop-off. In a typical year, this coordination group begins around four thirty AM to ensure a six thirty AM bus departure from the village. Even in a fairly mild year, road crews often need additional time to get roads to the point where buses can safely pass, resulting in school delays or closures. But this isn't a typical year. This academic year, we have a split bus run where elementary students arrive to school forty-five minutes earlier than last year, seven thirty. And high school students remain in school forty-five minutes longer than last year, which is three forty-five. We anticipate accumulating five hundred thousand miles on district roads this year, twice what is typical with a day that has been extended by an hour and a half. Additionally, I feel that two part-time drivers will be difficult to find. The school keeps expanding advertisements for full-time drivers and full-time driver subs, which are the part-time guys. The district pays twenty-two dollars an hour for full-time drivers and eighteen fifty per hour for subs. And we have trouble maintaining a full staff. Currently, we are understaffed by two full-time subs already. With additional demand on the highway department, admittedly by the school district, coupled with tight market for drivers, I would ask the town board to consider keeping staff at their current levels. Thank you for your consideration, Chris Clapper. Thank you.
Mike, in our discussions, uh, we talked, and I think it was in a, a budget meeting that you had, we brought up the fact of how much it helped the town budget to allow Jay Gaskins to plow snow with you.
I never said that.
No, I said, we talked, I, I'm not saying you said that, I'm saying we said that. The town board said that. And for a few year, for a few years, Jay and Jamie were, were helping that, helping the highway garage plow snow.
Yeah.
And our situation is, is that just say that Jay is only needed for thirty hours a week or for whatever hours a week at the sewer plant, I mean, he has his deals, he has to go in there and he has to do his testing. That can be done anytime during the day. Uh, I think there was years, your, your first year in office, that didn't he, wasn't he one of the plowmen, was you?
For a while, yeah.
So that's, that's one of the things that we wanted to ask, and I think we asked you before, if you'd be willing to do that, and, and you told us, yes?
If, if I have, if I have room for him, I will have him.
Yep.
Right, I have a guy right now, a young kid that we've been using, that works great, there's no dissension, there's no problem in the barn. And we're paying him fourteen fifty an hour, and he was very happy with that, so. Like, again, I can't see paying somebody thirty-six or thirty-some dollars an hour, cuz it's gonna be overtime. Because I, I believe New York State says that if you work those hours, you're entitled to pay for those hours.
See, there's a pretty big value to the town in that, just because it offsets our Redwood Sewer deal that we're, that we've been working very hard at.
I completely understand the situation of Redwood Sewer and Waters, and I don't think this is the place to talk about that. But I will consider using Jamie as necessary.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
We'll see that.
About Jamie?
Jamie's worth it to Rick, isn't he, John?
Not, not, maybe not all the while, I mean, he doesn't have a CDL.
I understand that, I understand that.
There're two guys that we can get them away from water and sewer, that help them out a lot.
Well, maybe down the road, we can discuss that situation.
I mean, if you.
It should be discussed.
If you keep your workforce the same level, at nine.
Yep.
You need one part-timer, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's where I'm at. Anybody else have anything to say? Feel free to speak.
The only bothers me is somebody gets sick, you have a water break, you have a sewer break, I got a snowstorm. And I understand those, those things can all happen. Uh, if I get one or two guys get sick, where are we gonna be, boys?
Let's just, can I just put this out there? As Chief in Redwood, I depend on the roads to be as clean and clear as possible. I expect the hydrants to be as accessible as possible. Time is money in those situations, and I can't tell you how many times I've had to dig out a hydrant. If we catch up to a hydrant that's clogged, broken, we're gonna need one of those men. Actually, probably both of them, I've seen them on fire calls, both of them, they'll shut off. Uh, things of that nature. Uh, you're, you're throwing commitments, they, they have, if I need to have the pumps turned on, my first phone call is to Jamie. And Jamie's supposed to go ahead to, if he's out on Weldon Island plowing, that's not something that's gonna happen steadfast. Those are all situations to consider, when you're starting to pull people from responsibilities and commitments, you need to be able to backfill those. Let's be honest, we don't have the capability to do that. There's nobody else that can go do that job.
I'm asking you guys to leave things alone, possibly, please, leave things alone. I'll see how it goes, if somebody retires, I can't be wrong, we talked about it, and I would just go with attrition. Leave things alone for now. Regardless of what people think, I believe everybody in this room believes, that barn is running fine. That barn is running better than it has in a long time. There is no problems with lawyers, there is no problems with life-threatening situations. I'm asking you guys and Sandy, please think about what you're doing here. And I think, uh, everybody, almost everybody in this room will agree to that. I mean, if there's somebody in here that says, no, I don't want my roads plowed at a certain time, please speak up. You know?
I don't think I might here have kids young as, as George and myself, but my stepson gets on the bus at six forty in the morning now. He's on the bus a half an hour earlier than he has been any other year. And to not think about the bus being able to get down the road, or him not be able to, you know, get to the bus, if we, or us not be able to, if we had to drive them, is, is not a good thought. I mean, George lives on, he's got two small kids, and they need to be able to get on the bus. And the plowers need to be able to be on these roads to get, be able to get these kids to school. To and from, and it's not just one run, it's two runs, because they're split. So you have the bus run at six o'clock here, you know, after six in the morning, and then an hour later, you get the high school kids. And then same thing coming home. He's home after forty minutes earlier, but then an hour later, there's another bus coming down the road with the older kids.
Outside of plowing, Brent, like, if, what is, what's the benefit of reducing the, the force? I mean, during the summer, the smaller crew, I don't understand the benefit of the, I understand the end game to save money, but I'm not sure how we get to the point where we had so many people at the barn, days were operating, and now we can't sustain what we have?
I mean, I'm, part of our thinking process here is that we used to have a night crew for a lot of years, wasn't it, Mike? And both Billy and Tommy, they were there, there was a night crew, I don't believe that those guys were part of it, or maybe they were part of it earlier on, I'm not sure. Um, and. Um, and so Mike's first year in office, he was in office for about two months. And he came to me and he said, "I'm not going to do, I don't want to do the night crew." He said, "I'm going to just have shifts for my man or have weeks that this crew takes care of what happens at night. And the next week, a different two-man crew takes care of what happens at night." And I believe that's what you did, and I thought it worked pretty well.
It worked great, but also got rid of the night crew.
You know, you, you got four sets of guys, or back then you had five sets of guys. Okay? Because we ran five big trucks and we weren't doing the small trucks, okay? So that meant, once every five weeks, two guys had to cover the night, right? And that's the way you set it up, and I, I thought it worked pretty well.
The night or the weekend?
It was just the state road.
And we were plowing the state road, okay? So then we stopped plowing the state road. And that revenue ranged from eighty-seven thousand dollars to a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. That's state road revenue that we no longer get, okay? I, I understand that. Mike came to us. He had projections as to what it was costing us. It's hard to put a figure on the wear and tear of the trucks, but there was a lot of wear and tear on that truck because Mike plowed the state road himself for how many years, Mike? Twenty?
Five years.
You know, so that, that, a lot of going back and forth. Okay, so you're asking, you're asking, what are we, what are we saving or what is the, what is the deal? Okay? Well, our thoughts were in the beginning of this budget process that we felt we wanted to do more road improvement projects in the town of Alexandria. And by laying off two guys and by putting on part timers, we could save a hundred thousand dollars. The two, two guys are a hundred and sixty, the part timers are forty-five. So let's say you've saved seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. We, in our first budget, put that into blacktop, into additional blacktop to do roads in the town of Alexandria. I think we've all looked at it. We've talked to Mike a lot. We've talked to taxpayers. And I think some of our feelings have changed about that. Uh, I'm, I guess I can only speak for myself, but my feeling has changed about that. But that's what we were intending to do, George, is we were intending to do more paving projects than we've done every year and do more roads and fix more roads and buy more blacktop. And one of the things that I realized from road projects is, I worked for Silk Co. for seven years and I watched them when they come in the town of Alexandria. And they come ready to go, and they bring their own operators and their own equipment. We supply the trucks. We supply the flagmen. We supply some other people, okay? So obviously, it takes bodies there. But I think everybody can see that the road projects that we've done in the last X amount of years are not totally done by our guys. I mean, don't get me wrong. I got, on the Stein Road, they got eighteen pipes they got to replace, right, Mike?
Number six.
You know, so before you could do a paving project, you got to replace eighteen pipes. That's a lot of work, eighteen pipes. You know, it takes X amount of guys to, to change a pipe in a row. I mean, Billy, you've done it, you did it for years. It takes, you, you can't go out there and replace a pipe in a row with two guys. It takes four or five guys or you got a dump truck you're bringing in to fill. You're taking out bad stuff. There's a lot to it. So that, those were our thoughts, you know, in the beginning of this budget process. And I, I have some different feelings about that now after talking with people and looking at it. And I'm, that's kind of part of the reason that I'm, where I'm at as far as compromising and, and letting these two guys stay on. As far as what we do down the road in future years, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think we'll have to see what happens this year and next year. And is there somebody that might be ready for retirement? Possibly in the next two or three years, from what I understand. Another one possibly in four years, from what I understand. So, but I'm not going to expect that person to sign their name on a piece of paper that says, "I'll retire in four years" or "I'll retire in three years." I don't expect that.
So where are we at? What's, 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 where are we at? Are we going to be in limbo for the next three or four months or are we going to make a decision on?
These two gentlemen have been on eggshells ever since it was mentioned that their jobs were going to be eliminated as January first.
Yeah.
They probably would like an answer tonight.
Yeah. I mean, as far as this budget is concerned, by, we have to pass this budget. We have to adopt it by November twentieth. If we don't adopt it by November twentieth, it goes back to the, I think it goes to what they call an austerity budget, okay? Which usually is your previous year's budget. Um, I think we would like to pass this budget by November twentieth, one way or another. My feelings are if we can pass this budget tonight, that's fine. If we have to adjourn this meeting for a week till next Thursday, uh, and go back and, uh, do what? I'm not sure, or re-figure? I mean, I'm ready to, I'm ready to go with what I want to do tonight. I'm ready to say, "Don't lay these guys off. Give us a, a commitment that says that, you know, we, we can do something through attrition that obviously isn't going to happen this year, and let's go on, let's move forward." That's, I'm only speaking for myself, okay? I think we need the other, other board members to speak.
I agree with Brent, and I think there should be some commitments from Mike. Maybe we got them in writing. Uh, we got, when we, we let two guys on about three years ago, we were supposed to get GPS systems and cameras in the yard. And as soon as the guys went to work, the GPS systems got thrown out and the cameras got turned off.
Is that why, is that because you don't trust your workers?
No, that's because-
Is that why you would put GPSs and cameras up?
My, it's just an act.
Are there cameras around this building?
All over.
All over.
There's cameras everywhere you go.
I mean, you don't trust people?
And in all of our other vehicles that are not highway barn vehicles.
You don't trust people?
They're for liability. They're for insurance. They're for all types of reasons. It's not about stealing or whatever else.
There's no reason why they shouldn't be there.
Look at your companies all over the New York State or whatever-
Every trucking firm has GPS and everything.
That have systems that monitor what their employees do.
It's just a thing-
And not, not only that, Tara, but one other thing. One thing that was agreed on and it's in writing is those GPS systems cannot be used for disciplinary purposes.
They weren't there when my father worked there.
We have that in writing from the union rep and from us.
They were never installed when my father worked there.
No, no, they weren't. No.
So why are they now?
Times have changed.
How long ago was that?
How long ago was that?
Doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
Nobody does it.
Well, we didn't have cell phones and we didn't have a lot of this technology.
Doesn't matter. Well, actually, we did. There was this thing called TomTom. It's a GPS. It's been around for a while, okay? That's a ridiculous reason to hold up the budget approval because they don't want to put cameras and GPS up in the trucks. You guys are messing with two men's lives. We have families.
And that statement right there tells everybody that this has nothing to do with money.
Yeah.
Nothing.
This is a personal vendetta against this man, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves. Town workers' lives matter. How about that? They're part of your community. You don't care because your job's not on the line.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything. I did not say GPS, so don't point that at me.
Then don't bring that on. I'm just saying.
There's really a reason why you shouldn't have GPS. Why?
Your job's not on the line.
Why?
So you have no trouble.
Huh?
You're not going to lose your job, so you're not, there's nothing that has to do, right?
The, the-
I think it's a small thing to request, though, it is.
That's to why we need the GPSs in the truck.
We talked to our insurance company. They're the, they're the biggest ones who would like to see them in the trucks because a lot of the companies and a lot of the businesses they deal with, it's all about liability. It's all about an accident. It's all about who's at fault in that accident.
Okay, so-
And that GPS will tell you who's at fault in that accident.
That GPS will tell you where that vehicle was.
And they'll tell you how fast that vehicle was going or where or what was going. Um, and that's just, you know, I was onto the GPS. I mean, I believed in the GPS system a while ago. I am not saying that we need to have GPS systems in order to adopt this budget. I, I am not. I'll just be real clear about that.
I'm only getting them, are we just simply saying it would be a nice gesture? I mean, why not? Is there any reason why we shouldn't have GPSs on these trucks?
I've already made concessions about, Brent, about letting guys go.
Huh?
I've already made concessions.
On what?
John, keep bringing this stuff off. It's not helping our situation.
What was the concession you made?
It's all personal, John. Stop.
What was the concession you made?
Just please stop it.
I, I just personally don't see the, I, I understand the whole insurance. Like, all right, I get that. If the gentlemen are out plowing and they have their yellow lights on, traffic yields to them. They have the right of way. That's black and white, okay? If there's an accident while somebody's plowing, I can tell you from experience, there's a lot of investigation goes into it. They go out to the DOT building. They do their thing in the jar. They go through the whole nine yards. These gentlemen are professional drivers. They have more courtesy. They ha- I've driven with Jim, okay? And the biggest truck in the smallest roads, okay? There's a lot going on to that thing at one time. At one point in time, there's conversations about putting one person in the truck. I'm here to tell you right now that it's a very bad idea in these road situations that we have here.
Yep.
There's too much going on right now in that truck to begin with. The cameras, if you guys wanted to put a camera in the truck for liability to say, "Hey, these guys are in accidents", I have it at work. It activates if I take a corner too sharp or I do something too dramatic for the vehicle. It recognizes it, starts to record for a split second, and it shuts off. A GPS, we use them on drum. It simply lets the boss man see that that truck was sitting here for four hours. That truck was sitting there for six. That was the only intention for it. Ain't care how fast we're going. Okay, there's, there's eyes. There's people out there that see that kind of stuff. It happens all the time. Hey, that guy was driving so-and-so really fast to a fire call. He had his blue lights on. I get that all the time, okay? There, there's other situations. There's other ways to save money. I think a GPS is really foolish. The cameras in the barn, I don't understand why they're there. I, I get you guys want to protect property. I'm a man-
Cameras in the barn are on the outside of the barn, and it, it's all about vandalism or thievery. The only cameras on the barn are the, are outside of the barn.
On the telephone pole.
And I've heard times before of different things happening at the barn, you know, while people weren't there. So, and they're, they're there. I don't think Mike has a real big problem with those cameras. He hasn't voiced to me that he has. But going back to those GPSs, these GPS systems, for ten dollars a month, I think it is, ten dollars and ninety-nine cents a month, they tell when you take a turn fast. They tell when you break hard. There's all kinds of alerts. They tell when you leave your vehicle idling for however minutes you set. As to, you want an alert if it, if the vehicle idles for ten minutes, you want an alert if the vehicle sits still and idles for thirty minutes, whatever it may be. And again, one thing that was very clear that we did in the beginning is those GPS systems cannot be used for disciplinary person, reasons. So if somebody lets their vehicle idle for too long, so be it. There's nothing we can do about it.
Brent, so what's the purpose of buying it if it's not going to be used for monitoring or? I, I don't understand.
We've talked about that.
You, you just have a GPS at that point in time to tell you, "Hey, they did this, but I'm not going to do anything with it." That's four hundred dollars a year. You're just wasting time to buy six vehicles, whatever. You're wasting that money.
Yep.
Again, I was-
I mean, I think the GPS system, Mike, would have helped us with the accident that you had with one of your plow trucks last year because it would have showed us, which I, you knew anyways, that the driver was not obeying your instructions. Is that correct?
He wasn't. We all knew it.
What's that?
He wasn't. He all, we all knew it. He doesn't work there anymore.
Yeah.
That situation is completely moot.
But again, he had two people in that vehicle too because that was a big truck.
Yeah. It was.
If it had been one, we may have never known. I mean, thank God, nothing happened and nobody got hurt and the damage was covered by insurance.
Again, going back, going back and going back, your cameras are all on outside. Granted, I didn't like it. I'm old school, but they are on. And, and if I made a departmental decision to not do other things, I, I don't want to come off saying it, it's me, it's mine. I believe the people that spoke, are still speaking, want me to make those decisions. And I understand you guys want to control my decisions. That's okay. I can live with that. I think I've gotten hardened to what, what has come down the line from so many people. Those are my decisions at this time. If I'm gone and I get unelected or, or I die or whatever, you guys can take control, complete control of what you want. But until then, allow me to do my job. I don't think anybody on the community is really complaining. There's a few, and we all know them. I can tell them. I can tell you who they are. Let me do my job, John, and, and maybe. That's all I'm asking.
I'd like to, at this point, I mean, I, hopefully, maybe you'll, we'll hear some, from other, other board members.
Yeah.
But I'd like to, at this point, uh, I'm ready to make a motion that we allow the two guys to stay on and we don't lay them off and that you try to use Jay as much as you can and, uh, we have the, we'll, we have the agreement or we'll have the agreement about attrition. I'm, I'm ready to make that motion, but it takes three people for this to happen.
Can we put this in writing?
We can put it in writing.
You got it on audio.
Yeah, why do you need it in writing?
I mean, do we largely know in history when, when something happened, we'd say, "Well, this is what was agreed to."
It, it's right there, John. It was just a change.
Huh?
People do change their minds, John. Have you ever changed yours?
And, and just-
Not, not when I give my word. No, I don't. I've thought about it.
Ju- just to clarify-
Can you tell me, Mike, while you sat in here, stood in here a week or two ago, and pleaded with us to come in and look at the, the docks?
Why?
Brent and I came in there and you came in and told us to leave. We can't be in there without your permission.
I didn't tell you to.
Let's not, let's not go there. Let's deal with this budget hearing.
I'm just saying, you want to work with us, let's work together. You've got to come over to, what do you think, those docks guy? He's never been the end of that.
Let's, let's deal with the budget hearing that we're doing. George?
In regards to your motion that you just put on the floor, uh, with Mike having to use Jay as much as possible, is that in lieu of him being able to fill it with that fourteen dollars and fifty cent guy or whoever is cheaper than thirty dollars an hour?
We had, we had agreed this year at the beginning of the year that that was not going to be a fourteen and fifty cent, dollar an hour guy. It was going to be a twenty dollar an hour guy. That's, and that's within a dollar, a dollar fifty of what Jay's making. I understand you're, if you're adding up the dollars where you're coming from and I, you know, that's part of the process here, so I agree.
And if I could save ten dollars over the span of six months for every hour of work, that, that's a hell of a chunk of change. And we're talking about losing people in the long run and, and losing positions. Uh, there's not a lot of people that are qualified showing up on people's doors left and right.
Yep.
We all know that. You think you need to treat what you got a little better than what we have. That goes across the board everywhere.
From what I said, I didn't say that he had to. I said that he would try to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like-
But I also know last winter that Mike had a couple guys that were part timers, right? He was calling them in the morning sometimes. They weren't answering his phone. They'd rather go ice fishing. I mean, he told me about some excuses that he was getting.
That was the first year.
What's that?
That was the first year that has not happened.
You know, so what I'm getting at is, is that he has problems getting part, or he has had, you know, problems getting some people to come to work when he calls them at four o'clock in the morning.
Well, that's what I'm saying. In lieu of being able to fill that seat with a cheaper guy, Jay's going to be his man. Is what you're going for here.
Yeah.
I, I believe the way you said it was that Mike needs to try to use Jay as much as possible.
Yep.
And I believe it needs to be worded that Mike needs to use his part-time help as much as possible in lieu of Jay being at the ready.
Jay helps out the, the water sewer district though. It, it takes his salary as leave from them and helps, but they need a lot of help.
I, I understand that.
And the guy you're hiring for fourteen, fifteen bucks an hour, oh, well.
And, and-
And we got to look after the water sewer all we can.
That the guy that's sitting in the passenger seat doesn't need to technically have a CDL to operate that wing, okay? But if the man driving that has an episode or gets sick or something like that, you have a truck stuck on the middle of the road somewhere, you need to be able to move it. You need to be able to maintain it, right? So I understand where you need to use Jay, and he's perfectly capable of it, seem to do it. Uh, I just feel like that when we talk dollars and cents here, we just talked about losing two people, that we need to consider the, the cheaper option at a time and, and go that route before we try the more expensive version.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say here?
I have a question. From when Jerry was in as the superintendent, what his budget was to what it is now with Mike, that has downsized, correct?
No.
Mike's budget is the same as Jerry's? It's more.
It has to be. Everybody's salary increased. So there's more money. I mean, it's just, this, this is more. Everything's just more.
Of course, this sand is all gone up.
Everything's shot.
I'm not really, really sure about that, but that's probably one of the reasons that we wanted to be able to put more money into road construction projects also. I mean, our insurance health insurance goes up every year, so do a lot of the other expenses.
Everything does.
But I, as I said, I'd like to hear from some other people or, uh, I'll make a motion as far as what I'm thinking about and what I want to do. Uh, and then we have to see where it goes from there. it goes from there.
I would like to adjourn this to the eighteen, so we can think about what everybody just mentioned.
I give you my word, we'll go through attrition. What else do you want? Okay? I'll give you that word, right here in front of all these people, we'll do the attrition thing. You can't ask for any more than that.
You can't do any more of that than that.
Just, just a question though, if you're, doesn't the budget, the way that it's set up, account for eliminating those two positions? So if you're looking at leaving those two positions, wouldn't you need to adjust the numbers in those budgets, and then take away, you know, at that line item, and then take away from the blacktop or wherever you were plugging it into? It seems to me that you still need to make some adjustments before, if you're looking at leaving the two guys, that you still need to make some adjustments before you adjust this budget.
That's right.
But we are not interested in going over the two percent, and we're not interested in raising everybody's taxes, so something's gonna have to get.
Yeah. I mean, we-
So I think to my point, then, to adjourn for another week, so you can go through it, is, is a good idea, because you still, you know, have adjustments to make.
A lot of my, a lot of my personnel, I run through my CHIPS money, so all we need to make is pay for a, a large amount of that. Um, I've already got the money in the budget, all you've done is move some over into the highway. Uh, we're gonna have extra money next year in, in CHIPS money, so it's not gonna be a burden on anybody, like it hasn't been in the last two and a half years or three years.
Nicole has, uh, given us papers that whatever way we go, we see how it's gonna affect the budget. If we go one way, what is gonna, how it's gonna affect, or if we go another way, I think there's actually three different options that you've adjusted the numbers for. Um, one being the, no change whatsoever in the staffing level-
Right.
-which was the initial, two being with a part timer, other one being with two part, three part timers, that we, that we originally had planned-
Yeah.
-in laying two guys off. So we actually have a lot of different options upon us, and as Mike said, all five board members are in strong agreement that we, two things we don't wanna do. We don't wanna go over the tax cap, and the other thing is, we don't wanna raise taxes in a year, especially a year like we're in right now. And I think we're all in strong agreement on that. So, if we decide to keep the men on, then we're gonna have to take that money to keep them on from within the budget, and I'm willing to accept that, and I, and we've got a couple different things outlined, and, you know, whether we would need to sit down with Mike again, before we complete this, to, because there's only so many line items we can take this money out of, right, Nicole?
Yeah.
I mean, DB is an extremely small budget.
Yeah.
It's got ten line items. Uh, DA has a few more line items, but they're very specific, they're, you know, they're plowing personal services wages, their equipment, their machinery repair, they're, they're real clear what they're about. Um, I think in this year's budget, we had granted you a, I'm gonna say a twenty-five or a thirty thousand dollar equipment trailer. It, it's in this budget, right?
Yeah.
And we didn't take that out, did we?
No.
Cause that was one of the things we thought about when keeping these two guys on, is taking that out. And I, and I voted no to take it out, the reason is, is because you've talked to me for three years about this trailer, and I've said, next year. Well, I'm not gonna say next year again, I'm only one vote here, but that, that's where I stand on that, so.
Well, that's only twenty-five thousand anyways, so we might as well leave that alone.
What's that?
Now, the trailer's only twenty-five thousand anyways, right? There's no sense in, leave that alone, that's not gonna do it anyways.
Well, when you're looking for money, and every, everything else-
Well, we'll take it back, when, instead of doing the blacktop and helping out the community like we're gonna do, we'll take it back out, give, give it to them.
Yeah.
That's where we took it from, put it to, we'll do a real trailer I got if I have to.
Huh?
I can live with a trailer I got if I have to. I, you know, I, I, there's a motion on the floor, you know? See what happens, and, and Godspeed.
Yeah. Well, I'd just like to, I'd like to move forward, and, you know, I, I see the petition there, and I read it, I've read it, uh, I, there's a lot of people in the community that are behind that, you know, we're talking about kids, and safe roads, and everything else, and I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we, we, uh, adopt a budget on the basis of, of, uh, keeping the two guys employed full-time, and that you're willing to reduce the positions through attrition, which obviously, not asking that to happen this year.
Right.
Uh, and that happens when it happens, as I said, we don't have control over that. Uh, there's some others that might wanna extend the, continue this hearing or whatever, well then, if I don't get the votes for my motion, I don't get, that, you know, there's nothing else I can do, that's, that's my feelings. Somebody else got better suggestions, or think that there's something else we should do, feel free to speak up, but that's, uh, that's my motion.
Say your motion again.
My motion is that, that we don't cut two people from the highway barn, that two people stay in those positions, and that Mike agrees to reduce the workforce in the highway barn through attrition. And I think that's what you just said you would do, right?
I just told everybody in this room.
Right.
But doesn't that mean that you'd have to adjourn to go back and choose one of those three budgets that you have outlined?
No, we have the, all three of those right here, we've got the numbers for all three of those right here. We, we can, you know, it's, it's no different than what we did two years ago, as I talked to you with the, with that, the final meeting, there was a change made at the last minute, and just as long as we clearly defined that change, we did, we were able to do it.
I would like to look at them, I haven't really looked at them, I don't think anybody other than you has looked at them.
She emailed them to everybody-
I understand that.
-a day ago.
Hey, don't you think you would've looked at them before you had a meeting?
And I think you have a copy of the whole thing in front of you.
Yeah. Right now.
Yep.
That's not fair.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with the motion to, I'm okay with the motion for, to say for tonight, that we want to retain those two positions. I'm not ready to approve, I, I know we got some figures, but I would like to be able to take the time to look at all of those, and make sure, don't we, I would just, I would like to adjourn it, so that the public, we got those figures, but the public did not, with the changes. So I think we need to make this changes, and put everything back on, and put it out there. That way, if there's more questions, they have the ability to ask. But I'm okay with that motion, because I, I understand what they're on.
You're okay with that motion, but you won't second that motion tonight.
Can we modify it to not approve the budget, just to change that portion of it, and then put the new figures out for everyone to look at, and then we'll come back and approve it later?
I think that's what he's saying, is he wants to keep the two guys on, and they go through the three budget items, options, and go on, go that way with it. You know what you're saying?
I think we can, I think we can make a motion, I can make that motion that I made, and delete the, to adopt the budget, okay? And to, I can make that motion to change the figures in the budget, to reflect what, what I am talking about doing, okay? Um, if, and not adopt the budget tonight, that means we're gonna have to do it a, a week from tonight, roughly, or whatever it's gonna be, okay? Um, we'll have to continue the public hearing again, uh, and adjourn the meeting till that night, because we, if we close stuff, then we have to, we have an advertising issue going on with how we have to legally advertise, okay? And we, and I'm, what I'm getting at is, we don't have enough time to legally advertise, okay? So, I'm, you know, if that's, I'm not gonna get a second vote to adopt the budget tonight under the grounds that I've made my motion, and I'm pretty sure that I'm not, is that right? Everybody would rather pass a mo, a resolution to change the budget, to reflect what I'm saying, and be able to see that, be able to physically have Nicole put the final budget appropriated, potentially appropriated budget together, and do it at the next time. Is that what everybody's wishes?
Yeah.
You, Mike?
Yep. I mean, look how many weeks we took, put this thing together. I think we should put the same amount of effort into whatever change that we're gonna do.
Yep.
But you still have a motion to vote on keeping the two guys on the three options that you've got, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, what?
You can still raise the motion like you did tonight, to keep the three guys, but then you go back and take one of the three options in your budget-
Yep.
-and adopt that.
Yep. I mean, I, I'll make the motion that we change the budget figures, and we change everything so that the two guys, the two full timers stay full timers, and that we, which has nothing to do with the budget, but that'll come next time when we talk about Mike and him, and the attrition issue, that has nothing to do with his budget. So I'll make the motion that if this board can, if we can have three votes to approve that, to, uh, to redo the budget figures, to reflect what we're talking about doing.
I'll second that.
Well, that's my motion, and Sandy seconded that. Now we have discussion on that motion. Anybody have discussion?
Can we have more than three options?
What's that?
Can we have more than three options?
The, options aren't in the budget, I, our, options aren't in my motion.
Okay, I'm just-
Mike can have a million options, Mike.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, don't wanna be limited to those three.
Yeah, yeah. I got a lot of text messages coming through that we have to read, because, do you have email, Sandy?
Oh, I haven't even checked the email.
We're in discussion about my motion and Sandy's second. Any other discussion? You all sat, Mike?
I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
What?
You know, that, that, not to be limited to the three.
Yeah.
We're only talking about really one thing here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
John, are you okay?
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah.
So this is gonna allow us to reopen the public hearing, uh, or not reopen it, but keep it open, I should say, continue it, and change these budget figures to reflect wh- what my motion is, is keeping the two guys on. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those appai, opposed? None opposed, so that motion passed. Uh, so I guess we gotta adjourn this meeting to, could be continued.
Were you gonna read these into the record?
Yeah, a bunch of stuff-
Read what?
I thought you said you had a bunch of emails in.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying what we gotta do here, okay?
No, but-
I'm not gonna adjourn right this second, I'm just saying that one of the things we gotta do here is, we gotta come up with a date and a time.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, any of these things, this is a public hearing, this is part of the public-
Yeah, we're not closing the public hearing, we can't.
I just, again, then don't lose them.
Sandy, do you have anything? Emails?
Excuse me, Lord, but you don't need us here, you've made your decision, and-
You want me to do what the email?
We do, the discussion's already been done on the floor.
There, I, there's no emails that came in tonight.
Is Councilmember Thompson present? Did he, give a reason, I guess we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to, uh, read anything that doesn't have a name on it, is what I was told after the last meeting. They have to be identified, it's the same idea as a public hearing, when people are identified who they are.
Um, actually, that was from Andrew Nelson.
From what?
Andrew Nelson, the address, cause he has, he sent that to me also. And his, his question was, is Councilmember Tom is present? If not, has he given a reason for his absence? And I replied back to him, and I said, no, he's not present, he is out of town, and he said, an important meeting to miss, thank you.
I mean, he gave us a reason, he told us before he went, so.
That's the only one I got.
Uh, Wayne Sides, is there any other places to cut? Board members, question mark. Zoning officers, question mark. Well, board members, they didn't, we didn't take, we didn't take a raise. Uh, zoning officers, I don't know that anybody wants to cut the zoning, because we got a lot of properties in town that our zoning officers are dealing with. Uh, that's, that's all I have, Sandy, you don't have any more?
No, that, that's all the emails or texts I have.
Yeah. So now, date and time.
Have everyone talked about-
Does anybody else have questions? Stacy, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
Um, the only question I had, this is kind of from last week, um, we were talking about the, us owing the county eighty thousand dollars, and I guess Jefferson County maintenance revenue, there was a question as to whether that's supposed to be billed out to the county? Is it, no, if anybody had a chance to look into what is happening with those?
I, I don't know.
Nicole? I don't believe it's fifty, eighty thousand dollars now.
I can't hear you.
I, I don't believe it's eighty thousand dollars from the bridge back then, we've worked a bunch for the county over the last year.
Do you get any kind of a statement every, now and then?
I think we get it once a year, in the spring-
Okay.
-and then we start all over again, but I do not believe, I mean, I can get a hold of Jimmy, it is not eighty thousand, never was eighty thousand as long as I was involved. It may be thirty, it may be exonerated by now, I don't know, but it's not eighty thousand.
If we were working on county two, with the county this year, that would've dropped that cost also, but Town of Orleans assisted the county with our road.
And Brent, the Town of Orleans paid ninety-three thousand dollars off County Route Two in the Town of Alexandria, ninety-three thousand, we lost, for the guys not working.
That's what, that's what they had to pay Orleans to do that work?
Ninety-three thousand bucks, that could've went into the highway department.
Yeah. Yeah.
And as far as plowing state roads, there ain't no money in plowing state roads at all, buddy. I've been there for thirty-three years, there's no money in it at all. By the time you run a three hundred thousand dollar truck, up and down the road, with guys standing and everything, there's no money in it. You might think there is, but there ain't.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's basically what Mike came to us and told us two years ago.
And I believe Sherry Ferguson told us the same thing. Again, are you done with us, these good gentlemen?
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just, just, they have to do with highways, and, and I don't, I don't know how this whole process works. So when the county gets ready to go out and do a town road-
Yep.
-if it's in our town, do they come to you first?
Well, absolutely.
Okay, so you, did they come to you on County Route Two?
I, I don't, Brent knew before it didn't happen, I had that job. And when that job started with the Farsville, I still had emails going back and forth, trying to get some guys back so we could do that job, and it wasn't gonna happen, it's over the dam now, but yes, and the county will call us to do other jobs. We go blacktop in sometimes two, three, four days a week for the county, and we, you know, you don't get rich on it, I believe it's fifty dollars an hour for a truck, and forty dollars an hour for a van, is what they pay us.
Shared services.
Shared services, and, and we either, once it's off, they'll, I believe they still write us checks once in a while, um, they'll write us a check for thirty-nine thousand dollars for this, uh, October to December, for, uh, snow and ice.
So I'll figure it up at the end of the year.
Knock on wood, we don't have to go out only two or three times all fall, with money in the bank. Um, yeah, they do call us, all the time, I mean, Jimmy, Jimmy Lawrence is a great guy, and, and Andy that runs the payment group, and, and, uh, Mike Tricky that was, was deputy supervisor, those guys contacted, Jim, Bill knows, Tommy knows, these guys were here for thirty years, they know exactly what's going on, and, uh, I'm learning, just like everybody else up here's learning. We learn every day, you know, we make mistakes, someone makes that mistake I made, and it never happened again, believe me. Yes, we could've blacktop for, over in the Farsville for the county, someplace, last week.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, yeah, and, uh, I had to tell them no, because we, you know, we just, the trucks are getting together, and we're working on the Gore Road, um, and the Yep, and I had to tell them no because we, you know, we just, the trucks are getting together and we're working on the Gore Road, um, and the Denny Road, our, our dirt road, trying to get them back to where we can actually drive on them. And now we've got a resident down on Door Road has told us, listen, this is a town road and I need to get to my, keep my house, property, all winter. So now, this fall, we're gonna try to get down there, put pipes in it, but, and, and, and tailgate enough gravel in there to keep them going. I mean.
Where's Gore Road?
Uh, you know where the, the county pit is, you know, about that?
This Town of Alexandria approach? Yeah.
Yep, going, going that way, down the hill and up, and go right through the intersection of Limestone and, uh, Barn settlement. And it's right down, down on the end down there. And that goes, God forbid anybody moves down in there year round because it's gonna cost us a fortune to build that road.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to ask if the public has any more suggestions or any more answers to financial questions or any more things that we can take this period of time between now and our next meeting to try to get answers to questions for you. We did have some questions at the last, at the Zoom conference call we did or meeting. Uh, and Nicole got, got those answers for us. Um, does anybody have anything specifically that they want us to look at or look into?
Where are we with the stables?
Can't hear you.
Where are we with the stables? I mean, you put money towards the stables this, for this year, right? To do work on it?
Talking about, you're talking about the stables? Yeah.
Right, you know, our.
Probably have some stables.
What, what's going on there?
I don't think there's any, is, what is in the budget?
I don't know, she's wondering what's the current status is.
I understand that, but I'm talking, I'm trying to answer with the, with the money end of it too, because I think she's asking about the money. The current status, which we've kind of, we've been trying to report this at every meeting, is that there was some environmental, there was a report done, okay?
Okay.
Maybe you've already heard me say this.
Yes, I did. Um, I understood at one point for this year that you had budgeted so much money for work on there. Where are you with that money and did you budget more money next year for that?
One of the problems is the stables is in general fund A. Everything we're talking about in this room tonight is DA and DB. We are not allowed, correct me if I'm wrong, we are not allowed to take monies from, from general A and general.
To the four funds.
Right, so we're not allowed to take those monies.
You can't.
Nicole, what did we have budgeted for the stables was the fund balance to purchase the building.
Right.
Which was a fund balance issue that's been actually budgeted for two years.
But if, if you don't spend it, it doesn't do anything.
Right.
This is.
And because the stables is, is similar to our arena here, they're in general A. That, those monies are general A. We can't, if we decide not to do the stables or the stables is a bad deal and the guy doesn't fix it, we can't take that money that we got budgeted for that and give it to DA or DB.
Oh, okay.
We can't do that.
So if you budget money for this coming year for that, it's out of that budget then?
Yeah, it's out of that fund.
So you can't use it for anything else?
See, and the funds that Mike operates under, the DA and the DB, are extremely, are the strictest funds as to what you can do with the monies.
Okay.
Right, Mike? Haven't we learned? I mean, that's why we had to create a reserve fund for you, for equipment. We did, you know, that's why we did a couple of those things because we used some of Mike's fund balance to do that. Uh, we used fund balance because we had some taxpayers that came to us and said, why are you borrowing money to buy a two hundred and ten thousand dollar Volvo truck? And you're paying interest on it, you're paying bonding fees, you're paying all these things, when you got seven hundred thousand dollars sitting, sitting in your fund balance? So, so what did we do last year? We took it out of the fund balance and we didn't borrow the money because it was a smarter financial decision, we felt, because that two hundred and ten thousand dollar truck, by the time we got done doing all those things, might have cost us thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars more. Because some of these fees are crazy.
But where does DA money come from? Isn't that sales tax? Or isn't that, uh, real estate tax?
The what?
Where, DA, where does that money come from?
Where's it come from?
Yeah, like machinery and.
Yeah.
And, and, uh.
I mean, that's, that's the money. That comes from sales tax and property, well, sales tax, I'm sorry. Because we can't use property tax.
It's some tax and real estate tax.
Yeah.
So it does go into general fund, but then it funnels over into the.
Sales tax, yes.
Some of it does.
The sales tax, part of the budgeting process is that one point six million dollars a town gets in sales tax.
Right.
They allocate different portions to all the funds, can do that.
That's DB.
Yep, yes.
I think that answers.
So you could change, I see what you're saying, you could change the allocation of sales tax, not give it to one of those other funds and give it to DA or DB.
Yeah, if you're, if you've got your four hundred thousand over here waiting to go someplace. Or six hundred thousand over here waiting to go someplace.
Yep.
Why can't we use it one year and, and next year?
Yep.
Something around.
Yep, you're right.
Right, just out of curiosity, the truck, let's say it was a two hundred thousand dollar truck, you budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the next six years to pay that off plus interest and everything. Instead of doing that three hundred thousand dollar plan, now we're down to a two hundred thousand dollar plan, there's a hundred thousand dollar difference in there that would be allocated for budgeting. That hundred thousand dollars just goes to the wayside, let's say. Um, it's no longer needed. So, uh, instead of doing fifty thousand dollars a year for the budgeting, we're only gonna do twenty-five now because they don't need fifty. Everybody up there knows that, once I get rid of that twenty-five thousand dollars, it's never coming back. So, I, I just, I understand, like, hey, let's go and buy the truck, but at the same time, doesn't it kind of cut your ease off from underneath in the long run?
I mean, we had, we had to finance the truck, and I'm not talking about this one, the one before. And actually, the one before that and the one before that, we always financed it, right? And like you're saying, we were paying forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. Cause the, the term that they let us finance those orders is about five years, right?
Yeah.
So we were doing, you know, five hundred thousand dollars a year, or four hundred, or forty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars a year to pay for that two hundred thousand dollar truck.
So, so not to cut George off in any ways. That came out of my fund balance. The two hundred fifty thousand dollar truck.
The fund balance.
I'm just looking for her to say yes.
All right.
I'm saying yes.
I think the money that has been generated with the trucks that I've sold, the equipment that I've sold, and, and trying to save the town money, has built my fund balance to the point where maybe we could buy a truck or maybe we did buy a truck off it. So, uh, other than, other than a, a role that got done because there was pure pressure with the citizens and, and some of the board members, I saved the town money. I have not gone over my budget. And the only reason it looked like it went over my budget for one year is because somebody put a two hundred fifty thousand dollar truck in my, in my, one of my line items and that went out. And then we did a roll for forty thousand dollars, bang, Mike went over his budget. And.
I didn't think that, I didn't think that year, which was your first year, I think, right? I didn't think there was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar truck in your budget.
We bought.
There was a payment on a truck of forty thousand dollars.
But anyways, it was a huge mistake where Mike didn't over his budget by two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I remember, you know, if there was anybody who was here being crucified up here. I actually have saved the town money. Our equipment is in good condition.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay.
We're gonna get out of here.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, the increase of attorney fees. From forty thousand to seventy-five thousand to sixty thousand, back to sixty-five thousand, projected sixty-five thousand. What the hell are you gonna spend that much money on, attorney for?
We, we budgeted because of, uh, one, one of the things that we're dealing with now is we have, I believe, four to five grievances on their taxes.
And who created the grievances?
Who, who created the grievances?
Yeah.
The people that own a piece of property that think it's assessed too high.
The what?
The people who own the property that they're grieving that think it is assessed too high, so they're taking us to court.
I'm on the grievance board, we had one complaint last year.
Well, you wanna see our lawsuits? Or not our lawsuits, what they filed that we have to go to court for now?
I'm beginning not to believe anybody around here.
I mean, you need to talk to the assessor, cause he can tell you. He's the one who came to us and said, I need money for these legal fees that are coming up.
You people paid me a hundred and seventy-five dollars to sit there for four hours and hear one grievance. Now we got an increase of, of what, ten thousand dollars for an attorney?
They're not.
I can't believe it.
Is this, this is Joe Russell?
I can't believe it.
It was calm.
Who's the attorney?
For the grievances?
Yes.
It's been calm.
Thank you very much.
Next time wear a mask.
Thank you, gentlemen. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Your sixth fade away.
Ready?
Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
What's your name?
I guess we have to officially.
I just, I couldn't tell who you were without.
Continue this public hearing.
You, you said some wonderful things that helped me to get a better understanding and to make.
And that's, that's what I asked the, the Brett, who asked me when I gave that long text message, I wanted to sit down, I'd be willing to sit down with all you guys and say, hey, look, there's better ways to do things around here. I understand the pressure you guys have and the things that you need to do. I completely understand that. I, I, I help the gentleman over there with the same concept, the same fire budget. We just bought a half a million dollar fire truck. I, I know what it's like to go out and do something. Um, I've plowed for the government for seventeen years. I've been down these roads, I've sat in those trucks, I've lived with those men. I'm dear friends with a lot of you, you know what I mean? Like it's, there's a lot of resentment, there's a lot of tension. And I think there's just better ways to go about business. And I, other than taking somebody's feet off from underneath them, you know, which nobody just wants to do, don't get me wrong, nobody here wants to sit there and watch somebody fail or anything like that. But there's gotta be better ways to do things. And like I was getting with that hundred thousand dollar difference, like, once you start taking your budget, making it smaller, you know, I understand nobody wants to go above two percent, but you guys have the capability at any point in time to go up to two percent. That's, you're right, you guys can do that, you can make that happen. Doesn't need our approval, doesn't need anything. You guys can make two percent. Two percent over a while starts adding up. And I understand you don't want to inject everybody's prices up every year, but we just got done saying the cost of business goes up every year. Some things just need to be done.
I mean, one of the things.
I just need to inject a little bit, that, come, come to.
Yeah, let me, let me step in your office.
No, no, I did, cause in one of our many bu- budget sessions, you, you referred to the two percent tax cap, right? That's what you're referring to?
Right.
Okay, what's really interesting, it's two percent change, not two percent increasing taxes, it's a two percent change. So, and, and there, I don't know if it was the last budget meeting event with, um, uh, Dazna? It's kind of like a, a, kind of a, you know, it kind of gave us a little lesson on, on this. If, like your assessed value of your home can change year after year, correct? Okay, if, so in, say, twenty nineteen, the townwide assessed value is X number of dollars. If the next year, the assessed value goes greater than two percent, that's still two percent. Because, cause what, what, what it drives is, is, uh, how much money you, you, you pay, you know, your real estate tag, your taxes is based on your assessed value. So if that goes up greater than two percent, you, you, you have to stay under it. So it's, it's, it's not just raising taxes, it's any change of two percent.
Also, where it comes into play, uh, is the fire departments, okay? If you raise your budgets in the fire department over the two percent, then we're, then we have to override the tax cap. That's, that's another.
Not what you, it, I thought was, like, what you were thinking.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's, it's a whole series of other things.
It is. One of the things that we haven't, we didn't say tonight is that, uh, we did a study on how many towns, I wanna say ten towns. Uh, we did a study on ten towns in northern New York. And, and the study that we did, we got the information from the towns, okay? We got them from the highway super teds and/or the supervisors, or the town clerk's office, or on the internet. And that information we got was the number of full-time workers, the number of part-time workers, the size of, the size of DA, the size of DB, and, and the miles of roads that they had.
I have curiosity, those ten that you inquired about, are they the same demographics, let's say the same square mile, I don't say square mileage, same route mileage, uh, square footage mileage for the towns? And so we're, we're on the high, we're on the high end of that scale.
I was really interested, this, you can have a copy of this, you know. Um, Town of Clayton, square footage wise, is literally twice as big as the Town of Alexandria. It's just that the, the, I don't think the town is. Town of Alexandria maintains, um, sixty-eight point six one miles of town roads, thirty-three point four one miles of county roads, who total miles of a hundred and two point oh two. Clayton has seventy-six miles, a little, and change, seventy-six miles of, uh, town roads and a little, just short of thirty-eight miles of county roads, which total out to a hundred and fourteen miles. They actually have more miles of road. We have nine full-time people and between two and three temps. Clayton has seven, they have more, they take care of more roads, they have seven full-time and two temps.
No, that's, that's the Highway Barn, correct?
That's the Town of Clayton.
Right, so, so does their DPW crew assist in any of that maintaining at all?
They, they, they have seven people and two temps, wherever those temps are coming from, they're seven people from the highway department. But, so they have seven, literally seven. And have a more responsibility. What's really, uh, that, that was very interesting as well, they're, um, and, and it's largely driven by two less salary. Their, their DA budget, this is winter time budget, is eight hundred ninety-six thousand, our winter time budget is over a million.
Well, these are some of the figures that we're looking at, trying to make comparisons, trying to do our homework and research the numbers.
But is, is it? I don't wanna say this, is it beneficial for you guys to compare us to Clayton across the border, I think?
I didn't say that.
Like, like, I know, but that's, that's what this is, is the comparison to ten, ten different towns.
We've got nine or ten, uh, different communities.
Let's take everybody out of the picture, let's just focus on us. What do we need to do to benefit us? I don't care what Clayton does to take care of themselves. I don't care if they had twice as much with half as much.
You don't think that we.
I don't, I don't pay taxes in Clayton.
You don't think we should go out and see, when, try to compare apples to apples of other places or what?
I think you guys should take care.
I mean, one of the things that I've noticed recently in the last week and a half, is the TI Sun is publishing everybody's budgets. Uh, the legal part of the budget, which is the, the budget hearing, and they're posting the supervisors, the town clerks, the judges and everybody's wages. That's legal, you have to do that. I look at the judges' wages and you, you see different, you know, and the town clerks, you see different variations. I mean, I know the towns are different and the workload is probably different, but we try to make things, that's what we're trying to do by this sheet, is we're trying to get, compare things apples to apples. You know, uh, and that's where we came from, you know, we, we've looked at a lot of different things to try to work with these numbers.
When it comes to like the judging and stuff like that, like, uh, you know, as much as I do, a speeding ticket given on that side of the bridge goes over to the Town of Clayton, you know what I mean?
Town of Orleans.
Right, that's what I meant, sorry. Like, uh, we have one patrol officer here and he stays within the village, he will respond out, you know what I mean? He, he does have the capability, he has done it, you know what I mean? Um, I mean, if you're looking to make a buck in a judicial system, you gotta put a cop somewhere else other than a town line, you know what I mean, or a village line.
Yeah.
Um, consolidating services, you know, we've talked about that, you know what I mean? That was back when Greg Wills was sitting here. That's something, you know, you really should consider. You're talking about million dollar avenues, uh, you save a lot of money in the long run, you know what I mean? In that area.
A lot of people don't like that. I don't know if you saw the vote count in Schmo, but didn't happen.
Consolidating, what do you mean by?
It's an identity issue. People don't wanna let their identity.
Pride aside, I could care what my name on the back of my jersey is, you know, or in front of my jersey, you know what I mean? Like, I get it, you know, in the long run, when the fire whistle drops, every department here goes to the same house, you know what I mean?
Little communities, they, it's a sense of identity. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense, I'm with you.
It, see now, it's Town of Alexandria, let's say, okay, it's one big budget, you still have your identity, you're still operating out of Placis, you're still operating out of Redwood. It's just monies are funded totally differently and allocated differently. Uh, there's things to do like that, uh, just, I feel like, I feel like there's more options than what we have. I'd be interested in seeing the three plans that you came up with, potentially the fourth, you know, like, I don't wanna call you guys out on the carbon and say, hey, wha- what are they, you know?
Yeah.
Like, do we have the right to know what your, your plans are?
Well, that, that's exactly why I did want to approve.
I kind of agree more with that, you know.
Because I know myself, we can sit here and read them and we've got them right here in front of us, all three things, but to sit here and read them, you don't, you know, peo- most people won't retain, I mean, I need to sit down and see it and, and go through it. And I just didn't feel it was fair for, you know, you guys, that we were to approve it, even though we had gotten the, the numbers yesterday, it still wasn't, you guys didn't have those numbers. Um, I.
And I, I appreciate seeing more than one avenue, I, I really do, cause I really think there's two ways to skin a cat every time. And, uh, you know, I, I totally appreciate you, A, saving those two guys, you know what I mean, like, that's, all bullshit aside, that's a huge move. Like, that's, all bullshit aside, that's a huge move, you know what I mean? Like, uh, morally, ethically, you know, we can sit here and argue all day long whether you guys truly feel like they're needed there or not, but I can tell you right now, when you're out on the road eighteen hours a day, time after time, it's gonna wear on you, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I, can a part-time guy go in there and do the same job? Sure, absolutely, you know what I mean?
Can you answer, can you answer a question for me, since you've worked in these different areas? Because this is, this is an area where I'm very confused and frustrated. One of the things I had brought up when we were talking about plowing and stuff is I knew the school, because I've got a granddaughter that's at school at seven thirty in the morning now, and I've talked with Bill Gill, one of the bus drivers, and I know the buses are going out an hour earlier. Well, it only makes sense that if it starts snowing, I know in the old days, the general rule of thumb was, if it started snowing after two AM, the schools were closing or delaying. There was just no way that you could get the, the roads plowed satisfactorily to open school. That was the old, you know, the general rule of thumb. Now, so if we are gonna get schools open, the guys have got to go out even earlier. So if they had a, Mike has told me that it takes three hours with the trucks to pass all the roads.
Yeah, Jim, Jim Johnson's got the longest route. From him, I rode with Jim, from the time we left the barn, did Taylor Road, Swan Hollow, All the River Roads, Ken Route One, Damon, over the bridge. And that's, you know, whether the bridge is shut down or not, you know, you gotta go over the bridge still. Um, and all those backing up, it, it's not the greatest, you know? Um, I didn't mean to cut you off, but it, three hours on a good day. Jim and I were the last one.
So I'm just, here's where I'm going with this. So if they, if their old wake-up call was at four o'clock to be there by five, or three o'clock to be there by four, and we now have to back that up an hour, so they're getting there, let's just say, three o'clock, to plow for three hours and they're on their second pass and school, buses are going out, but they've at least passed it once. I don't know what the average length of snow is, you know, sometimes it might go for two days, some days it might go for four hours. Let's just use the four hours scenario. So for four hours it snows, they came in, they plowed the first pass, they do the second pass, so they've been out for six, let's say, six, seven hours. They go back to the barn, so they started at three, it's now nine, ten o'clock in the morning. Fuel their trucks, fill them full of sand, get them inside, clean them out, do what they gotta do. We've got a four or five hour break where there's no snow. Why are those guys sitting at that barn? Why don't they go home? I mean, I was in the military for a long time, and I did a lot of sleep rest schedules. And to me, during this, during the winter months, when you have that much responsibility, when you get the opportunity to sleep, you go sleep. You don't sit there in the, the town barn office because our regular duty day is from seven to three. So we have to stay there until three o'clock. You know, guess what? The second band of the snow comes through at nine o'clock. Now they've sat there all day, they, they've just done twelve hours, and they go home for two, and now they're coming back because we're getting a nighttime portion? To me, that is very poor management. And I, and I've asked Mike about it, and he said, well, they have to be there during those hours. If they came in and worked six hours, I'd be happy to pay them for eight. Go home and get some sleep. If you have to come in later on, we'll pay you overtime. But to me, it's poor management. If we get a snowstorm at night and you, they're, they're done, the snow has stopped. And I know that the scenario I just gave is a cookie cutter scenario, and it's, it's, you know, probably not the way it is ninety percent of the time. But I think that Mike needs to be able to make those decisions to say, hey, you know, round two is coming in another twelve hours. Instead of sitting here for five or six hours, go home, get some rest. Because I tell you what, I can go home and sleep on my couch for three hours, turn a movie on, it's noon, and I don't think I'm gonna sleep, but I'll fall asleep. And I'll get a three, three hour good nap that'll rejuvenate me enough so when I get called back in at, you know, nine o'clock or eight o'clock, I'm ready to go again. And I'm not putting people in dangerous ways.
So.
So why do they insist that they stay there at their barn?
Well, I mean, it, you, it's a union shop, right? I don't know if they have a set hours of operation kind of thing.
That's the seven to three that she talked about, seven to three.
So that, is that, is that?
But that, but it's like everything, it's all negotiable.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, if Mike had a fluent schedule where he could say, hey, look, guys, like, uh, let's just play the opposite. Let's say they come in, they, they plow for five hours, they go home for those three. All right, let's say, let's say they get back in at two and they're supposed to be there till five, right, for whatever reason, okay? Those three hours, it doesn't do anything. Looks like it's gonna spin back up to seven thirty. All right, guys, I want you back here at seven, ready to go. Mother nature blows it north. Now these guys are here, and their workday is short by three hours, let's say. Those three hours, would, I mean, you're just handing it to them now, you know what I mean? Then you, then you're messing with people's sleep schedules, like you said. But then, these guys don't have an allotment. Like, when I worked on Drum, I could only plow for twelve hours a day. Then Uncle Sam's would go home, and I couldn't come back. Say if I came in at six at, you know, at night, I couldn't come back in till six PM the next day, minimum. Um, so I couldn't stay over in the morning if I wanted to, if I was feeling good, feeling at it, couldn't do it. You had to go home. And you, you just stayed on your shift. These guys don't have the opportunity to have shift work. These guys are it for eighteen hours, you know, and.
Well, like, uh, with, with the DOT, they, they actually did something, because we had shift work, four thirty to one, one to nine thirty. And they would do, we, we had a thing called, uh, flex shifting. And it was just the reverse of what, you know, you think of the winter, this is, only happened during the winter time. Is, if, if you knew, yeah, that'd be greater than a day, it had, you know, you had to look at the weather, and you knew like a couple, yeah, like a couple days out, there was gonna be a good, a good weather day. What, what we would do is flex time. You, you would call, you, everybody, everybody in the afternoon shift had to be in agreement at each location. If they were in agreement, they would roll back. They would come in four hours early. Somewhat similar to what you're talking about, it's, it's time management. Now we got, instead of the, uh, the crew split in half, the, the two portions of the day, they're overlapped for four of the eight hours so you can actually get real work done. So that, we would do that all the time.
But like, I mean, no, you, you could contest to this. It could be doing nothing in Redwood. It could be a whiteout on the island, or vice versa. You know, I used to see the thing going to Drum, you hit four eleven?
That, that's covered by BEES.
I'm sorry?
That's, the BEES system solves that.
Right, but we don't have enough people to have.
No, no, you, if you got Jimmy Johnson plowing Wellesley Island, and say Jason Perrell, pay, plowing his responsibilities to south of the town?
Yeah.
Why would you, why would it make sense to hang on to him where this guy's already, this is his assignment?
So, let's just say, four days in a row, Jimmy's getting nailed on the island and, and Jason's not doing anything though. I mean, the wear and tear on Jim.
Jimmy Johnson plow, I'm just using him for example. Does he plow anything other than, than what his, his BEES is?
Uh, we have. I've been with him personally and, and taken somebody.
On a regular basis, he only plows the same thing over and over again.
I'm sorry?
On a regular basis.
They, they have routes, they, they have truck routes, and you know as much as I.
I'm not gonna argue with that. I just know, I just, I did this for thirty years, so I know this.
Right, I, I, I'm with you. I, I rode in quarter million dollar trucks.
Nicole, can you tell us, how much do we have allotted for overtime pay in the winter for the highway barn?
I think it's two hundred hours.
I believe it's two hundred hours per employee.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Once, and they're, they're making over twenty dollars an hour, so just for round numbers, you know, that's thirty dollars an hour, time and a half, for two hundred hours per guy with that many guys. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the questions I had, because I ask all kinds of questions, because I'm new, when, when March came around and, um, we were looking at layoffs or what were we gonna do for the budget? And I asked, how much leave time and vacation time do the guys have? Because if they've got a bunch of hours and we lay them off, would we be better off? You know, and then they have to take vacation time later on in the year, would we be better off paying them vacation time now? You know, I was just think, trying to think of all kinds of things. And when, I believe Brent asked the highway supervisor for those figures, what were you told?
You're talking about when I asked him for how much cop time and all that?
Mm-hmm.
He was, he had records, he had that.
Right, and, and what was it? Because didn't, and I could be wrong, but I, I want to say, because I remember questioning it, that each guy had like.
They were maxed out.
They were maxed out. They were, they were at their max thing, and I said, well, how can that be? Because we had a mild winter, and that's when we asked for the time cards that weren't there. And I know we're digressing now, but I'm just, I'm just, these are some of the things that I'm frustrated with, that, you know, I think the work schedules, and again, they're not gonna be cookie cutter and perfect, but I think the overtime is a lot of overtime. I mean, if we had a winter like, you know, nineteen seventy-seven or seventy-eight, when the big blizzard came through and it snowed for, for days on end, then absolutely I understand that kind of overtime. Um, but I think when we're getting that kind of overtime because we're mandating people to be in the barn from seven until three, and then anything before or after that is overtime, I, I think that's, I think that's costing the taxpayers a lot of money.
I mean, as an employer, I, I would almost feel an obligation to say, hey, this is your work schedule. Uh, I think having somebody that's in a, hey, one day you're gonna work seven to three, next day you work three to eleven, then you're gonna go home and you're gonna have a day off, you come back the next day and you're getting here at eleven at night. Like, I, I don't think that's beneficial, especially in a, a, a stressful situation like that. I, I know Mike touched base that, you know, being in a whiteout driving a truck, Mike can contest to this, that's, there are some times when things are just, you have to stop the truck. I've done it in the middle of Ford Drum, New York. You stop the truck, you gain your bearings, you pray you're on the road and you keep on going. Um, visibility, the stress, the wear and tear, you're trying to keep a line, you're trying to keep your line straight. If I leave a snowbank here and someone hits it, you know, spins off into the road because I left a, a bank here that's on me, that wears on your head, uh, you know, things like that, you know?
And that's why, I'm not saying that it's easy. I'm not saying that it's easy, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it's easy, and I'm not saying that I want to screw with all the guys' schedules. I'm just saying that keeping, if they have been up very early, because the, you know, the morning is when you're trying to get there and get it done so people can go to work and people and schools can go, then why keep them if the snow is stopped and the roads are clear? That, that's my only thing. That, that's just one of that, and that's why I asked you, because you've been very good at speaking.
So dynamic, you know?
And it is, it is very difficult. There was one other, the one thing that you've got, and, sorry, it went through my mind a minute ago. You have to make sure we announce when you're adjourned to, we have to make that decision because it hasn't been decided yet.
No, no, you're right, yeah.
So, yeah, we have to make sure that's done.
Yeah.
And I just thought about.
Because we have adjourned, right? No.
No.
Just a quick question on the same topic. So if all the guys are maxed out, what happens with those hours that they, with that vacation time or time off that they haven't used? Should they leave the job, or, or they retire, or what, what has, does the town now owe them all those hours?
They, the vacation does not carry over into the next year. Their sick time does. Their comp time they're supposed to use before the end of the year.
Supposed to.
Yes.
So apparently.
So it's, it's a user-lose function then? It's a user-lose deal. If, if I'm not mistaken, they actually take like a week of time off, is it once or twice a year, where they purposely take that time off so they burn some of that up, um?
I mean, what is the time that gathers up? The sick time?
Yeah.
There's no user-lose there.
No, they, they take onto that.
What happened?
They keep that.
Yeah.
That's, that's linked to the contract.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, there's no user-lose there, right?
No, but vacation, they gotta use their vacation, and they're supposed to use their comp time in that fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah. Because I, and the reason I say that is because I remember going through it with Dean Smith, and he had a tremendous amount of sick time and comp time that when he retired, you gotta pay him, you know?
Yeah.
And that was a.
There's a liability on your balance sheet.
Yes.
And that was an issue we had with Jerry, because what was the reason that we couldn't pay Jerry?
Because he didn't retire.
Because he didn't retire.
Yeah.
But I remember that, that was one of the, the, one of our budget workshops, we got a little, little, little lessons on, on, on that being a liability, even though we're not, it's kind of like the money for, um.
Yeah, you have to carry all your books every year.
Rec center. We haven't spent it, but it's, but it's a liability.
Yeah.
But, and I, on that whole thing, what I thought, and I, and I wasn't positive, so I kept my mouth shut. Last year, in what would have been nineteen, when the referendum was passed to buy that, you guys had money for the purchase, right, the two or three hundred thousand, however much it was, and that got set aside for the purchase. This year, in twenty twenty, there was two hundred thousand dollars set aside, I believe, or that was earmarked in the budget, for Bonnet Castle Rec Center because you guys wanted to do those ball fields and stuff. And when Corona hit, because that was what we took out of DA, or not DA, but General A. General A was, we're not gonna do anything with Bonnet Castle Rec Center this year as soon as that hit, because that's where, you know, we felt the taxpayer would feel the least amount of hit, you know, plus we didn't.
So there was two, there was two hundred thousand dollars, there was one line item that was a hundred and forty thousand dollars, there's another line item that was sixty thousand dollars for work that we had planned on doing up there. That was soon as Corona hit, and we started meeting, that was the two hundred that went away.
That was the two, exactly. And I thought that's what, um, Mike's wife was talking about, but I wasn't sure.
They were talking about the purchase.
They're talking, yeah, they were talking about the purchase.
And the purchase was from the budget before, and that money had already been set aside.
I think she was asking what your intentions were with this year's budget for that.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's what she's gonna, I don't want to speak for her, but.
No, that's why, that's why I didn't answer, because I wasn't quite sure.
There's a certain amount of confusion on their, the four fund balances. And the highways is DA and DB, and then you got General A and General B. You can't intermingle any of them.
Well, that's, yeah, I, like, you just said, I saved two hundred thousand dollars here, but I can't take that two hundred thousand dollars and move it over here. But when you save that two hundred thousand dollars over here in general fund, like, what, what happens to it?
Goes to the fund balance.
Just stays there.
I mean, if you made, if you made the income.
Just like a savings account is what it is.
Okay, so you, you guys can essentially.
And you could budget it, you could budget it the next year, if you saw.
Also, when the sales tax comes in, and clarify, Nicole, if I'm understanding it right, when the sales tax money comes in, you have to fund DA and DB first, right?
Yes, it's supposed to, yes.
Yeah, so, so in other words, if, if you had in your budget said that DA and DB was gonna get this much from sales tax, you have to give that much to them, and then what's left over goes to the General A. So, you know, when we were short this year, General A is, is what actually got shorted, because we had to fund the other ones first because the highway department is the biggest thing.
But the, the, one of the interesting facts is that, and I don't know how many years ago this changed, but at one time, one hundred percent of the, the town's, um, budget, I believe, came from sales tax, right? And, and, and our, the town tax rate was zero, right? And over time, it's, things are, like I said before about the highway budget, everything's going up, highway budget included. So after a while, because the sales tax didn't cover the whole town budget, so that's why the town has a town tax. We never had one, I don't know how many years ago.
That was, that was back with Sampson, and you could take that sales tax money, and you can fund all of DA with that sales tax money and all of A, that makes your tax rate zero.
Yes, but, but that's, it's, so it sounds like, you know, and I've heard it before from, from Mike, well, I, you know, my whole budget is, is not the tax. Well, that's, it's, it's, all, the town is all one big thing. And at one time, the entire town budget was, was covered, believe it or not, by the sales tax. That's how much money the town got.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I do have one other question that something was said. Is it, what was meant that there was suit coat bills that weren't paid this year? I mean, how can that be?
I didn't know what he meant by that.
Say that again, suit coat bills that were not paid?
I heard him say that.
Yeah, he said suit coat bills that weren't paid, and maybe he just means.
The way they bill or something.
I think, I think what he's saying is because the men were laid off, they did the work so late that he didn't get the bills from suit coat in time to submit them for chip, um, reimbursement for two thousand twenty. We're gonna get it next year in March.
March, is it?
Okay.
Yeah, Chips is a reimbursement program. You have to spend it to get, you don't just get.
Right.
Now, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we keep on talking about that state road and how, you know, you get eighty thousand dollars to maintain it, let's say. Alright, so that eighty thousand dollars that comes into the town, where does that money land?
Goes into the DA or DB, well, that would be DB, that's a.
So it does go to DB, so.
It goes to that.
So that goes straight to Mike's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can look on the, on the budget over the last, since two thousand seventeen it's on here, you've seen, and you can see it goes straight into the toilet.
As far as the.
As far as the revenue coming from it.
This is, I was doing a little bit of math, cause I, I, I worked for the state for a long time, so I know all towns make money off the state, all towns, so what, you have no concept of.
I, I, what I'm getting at is like.
This is, the, the town gets a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars from the county to plow thirty-three point four-one miles, which works out to be five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-one cents per mile. The low end, what the, what the state paid to do seven miles worth of road, the state paid twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight, fifty-seven cents a mile.
More than double.
More than double. So for somebody to say that the town paid to plow a state road, they have no concept of math. And it's a hundred thousand, cause it, it varies.
Like, I, I.
At a hundred thousand dollars, it was over fourteen thousand dollars.
Takes money to make money kinda thing, like, you gotta put the trucks out there, you gotta put the people, you gotta put the dedication for the hours. We just got done talking about how we're trying to cut back on overtime, but you know as much as I do, the bare road policy for the state.
There's no, there's, that's a, there's no, there's no bare road policy.
There is a bare road policy for the state.
Thirty-one years with the New York State Department.
You cannot tell me, Mike, that the quality for the road.
There's no such thing as a bare road policy.
So how is it that the policy for the townships and everything have to be passable? And a town has to be cleared?
No, no, that, that's.
So, so.
If, if, no, 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 if, if it's falling, no, I'm telling you, cause I, I did this for a living.
I understand, I did it too. I did it on the federal level, I mean, you're not telling me anything that I don't know.
Don't get this the wrong way. I was, I did this from the management side of things.
So explain to me why, if it just needs to be passable.
No, 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 if it's passable, if, if, if it's, if it's, if the snow is falling at a rate of one inch or greater, then you have to go out and plow.
One inch or greater per?
Per hour. Okay, if it's falling at that rate. If there's more than two inches of snow on the road, then you have to plow. It's nothing saying, in the New York State, there's only one road that has a, and it's called the Skort search policy. It's a throughway. No other road has this, it's a, it's a myth, it's a myth, it's a bare road policy.
Why would the state spend X, Y, Z on salt when they could be spreading sand at the same time?
Because salt, because, you know chemistry at all.
The same reason that when you drive from Redwood to Alex Bay, it lasts longer, that the road from Redwood to Brown's Corners was what? Covered with snow.
Well, it's because.
Hard packed up. When you got to Brown's Corners, the road was wet.
Because they used salt.
No, 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 what does sand do?
That's why the state does it, cause it does a lot better.
Come on, I need.
And they've got more, and they've got more money than every town.
What does sand do?
They don't care.
I'm sorry?
And for winter maintenance, what does sand do when you put on the road? What does it literally do?
It absorbs heat. I can tell you that right now. It gives you grip, it absorbs heat.
Well, it doesn't absorb heat, no.
It's all the way.
No, no, no. All of it, it's, 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 it's an abrasive, and it makes the road brown, and during the daytime when the sun is out, it's, it's brown instead of white. So the sun reacts differently.
It's gonna get hotter.
Okay.
Are you guys saying that Mike should still be using salt?
Okay, I'm trying to explain to you. Salt reduces the melting point. It's a chemical, in, instead of thirty-two, it'll drop it down to like twenty-five or even lower. So it'll, it doesn't matter, it doesn't depend on whether the sun is out or not, nothing. It just, it, it, it's a chemical reaction. So the state, a bunch of engineers, people like me, you do, it makes more sense. It's actually more effective to use salt, believe it or not.
So, why don't we, I mean, we've said we're beating up Mike for having terrible roads, but he's only given so much for salt, so I mean, he can only do so much with it, right, so?
Seventy-two bucks a ton. Very expensive.
I mean, we can't.
Every town does the same thing. I don't think any town uses all salt.
No, you can't, you can't afford it.
You can't afford it. I'm telling you right now, I, I got in the truck from the moment it shut off, it was.
My county, my, my worst year, I used forty-two thousand tons of salt. My, my salt budget alone was like four million dollars. Just salt, not, not hours, not fuel, not truck repairs, just salt.
Nicole, are you ready to go?
No town can afford that.
I am, yeah. I thank you for your time.
Okay, what are we adjourned to?
Yeah, so we're gonna, so I need a motion to continue this public hearing and adjourn it to, uh, what, what day works for everybody?
Eighteenth.
What's that?
I thought it was the eighteenth, that's it.
Eighteenth is next Thursday at six o'clock. Is that right on your calendar?
Holiday?
Is it, is that possible? Is it possible to have that as a monthly meeting as well?
Well, that's, we could discuss this.
But then you won't have to have one night before Thanksgiving. Not that.
Eighteenth, eighteenth is Wednesday, nineteenth is Thursday, yeah.
I'm not doing Thanksgiving anymore.
I mean, nobody should be doing Thanksgiving this year, we're not, but.
I'm gonna have eleven people.
It would be nice to have them both done at the same time. That way, we can have the bubble, public meeting, finish the budget, approve it, and then do the regular meeting. That way, we don't have to be here two separate nights.
And we don't have to be here Thanksgiving Eve.
And we don't have to be here Thanksgiving Eve.
Well, I got a big family weekend, I have Thanksgiving anyways, more than twenty of us, can't have, we're ten people.
That's not a lot.
Can you make that work, Nicole?
I'll probably come in this weekend and work on the bill.
So, does everybody wanna change that to Wednesday night or Thursday night?
Thursday, uh, Mike LaSalle is coming.
Mike LaSalle's here during the day.
Put him off another week.
I don't wanna do that.
Do we have to advertise, what's our advertising requirement?
A week.
So if the week is.
We have to go to the Watertown Times.
So week would be the eighteenth.
Would be, no, well, it would really, it would be the nineteenth.
No, we.
Today's, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you had talked about the eighteenth for a while.
Yeah, well, today's the twelfth, so seven days.
This is Thursday. We have, we've changed the meeting to Thursday, we got a week.
Okay, then we gotta redo Mike LaSalle.
Why, you can't do him in the day?
You know much work I got to do to.
But just have the work done, if we were to do it Wednesday night, just have your work done Wednesday, and don't worry about the meeting on, and have Mike LaSalle on Thursday.
Pardon?
You haven't got time to get sick.
I know, it really.
I would much prefer Thursday, I'm just saying.
Okay.
But I'll do whatever you guys need to be done.
I think we could have a problem with the public advertisement for the meeting, which we have to have it seven days. And tomorrow's Friday.
Yeah, let's not push our luck here.
Huh?
Let's not push our luck into a bad area.
Yeah. I mean, the only other thing we can do is adjourn this till next Thursday night, which we don't have to worry about any public advertisement, because we're adjourning it and we're continuing it. And then we could move our monthly meeting up from Thanksgiving Eve to Tuesday or something.
Tuesday's court night, is it? Isn't it? Is it Tuesday court night? We can't do it on Tuesday, it's court night.
Yeah, yeah.
Do the regular meeting the night on Thanksgiving Eve.
Yeah, that's just not.
I mean, I think what we do is we do the regular reading on Thanksgiving Eve, and we try to make it as short as possible.
Perfect.
Don't let Brett put a lot of numbers on the agenda. That's the key.
I like that, I like that. So no meeting Wednesday, we're adjourning this until next Thursday.
Yeah.
Regular board meeting the way it is. Nicole, you don't have to stress over bills, you got one extra week.
And we can still do Mike LaSalle, yes. Okay, so I need a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting until next Thursday night.
And continue the public hearing.
And continue the public hearings. Um, when, Nicole, when do you think you'll have the new figures on the website? Cause they've gotta have time to look at it.
We'll work on it tomorrow. But do you think we should meet with Mike and say, look, you know, I, I wanna do this once. I don't want to.
Yeah, I'd like to call Mike in and do it.
Yeah, let's have him in tomorrow afternoon, cause I gotta go to Hammond, cause I forgot to go there today. So we'll do it tomorrow afternoon and decide on a number.
And we'll, and we'll, and she'll, and the date and time that she's adjourning this meeting to will be Thursday the nineteenth at six PM here.
Yeah.
Right?
Thursday the nineteenth or Thursday the eighteenth?
Thursday the nineteenth. Day is the twelfth, twelfth and seventh are nineteenth.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So then, I'll give everybody an updated, and I'm gonna make it so it's the adopted column, it's filled in.
If you, if we can't get it.
The copy that I gave you tonight, says final at the top, final number one. If nothing changes, and if he stays with the nine men and the not, the one part-time guy, it's good to go.
Yeah, she's already got another stuff.
But if there's other changes made, I gotta redo it.
Does anybody want any other changes?
So this final one is with nine guys and one, one part-time. And the money came from where? We just took it.
Within the budget.
Right. It came from.
No, I mean, within, it came from the paving.
Okay, so it strictly just came from the paving?
Yeah. It came from that fifty thousand transfer to capital project?
Yep.
And part of the permanent improvement line.
We just go back where it was, right? But, but she also did something with sales tax.
Well, well, I had to adjust sales tax.
Yes.
So, uh, sales tax had to be adjusted, and I also adjusted the retirement numbers.
Because more payroll is more benefit.
Yesterday, I got the invoice from New York State Retirement, and I was able to pinpoint right to the dollar what we're gonna be spending on retirement, so I've gone in and changed them.
Okay.
I only, the adjustments were between forty-five dollars and two or three thousand, one way or the other. So those have been done, and it didn't change the tax levy. I just adjusted another number in the same fund. Look at that.
Okay, so tomorrow you can put this online.
I would, I would like.
If you got, I want you guys to look at it, look at it, and.
I'd like to call, I'd like to call Mike in tomorrow, just so he's sitting there and he looks at it, and he understands what we're doing. Mike, Tibbs.
So we'll tell him, this is what we did, the nine guys and your one part-time guy, forty hours a week. And is this acceptable with you, and if he says yes, then I believe it's good to go, but I want you guys to look at it.
I would like to, uh, make another change.
Huh?
I would like to make another change as well.
Well, then you better tell it now.
I would like to, to us to, uh, increase the Harts for Youth money to.
I don't, my feelings about that, we can't do that without increasing some others.
What's that?
My feelings about that are that we gotta be fair to everybody, and we kept Harts for Youth the same along with a couple others, right?
Okay, I'm okay with that too. But if we're gonna do this kinda hiring employees that don't really need, then let's do things that we really should do.
Well, then you, you need to talk to Nicole, or you need to send us all an email about how much you wanna increase it.
Okay.
And where I'm gonna get it from.
Yeah.
I mean, do you know how much you wanna increase it right now? It's thirty-five hundred right now?
Oh, it might double.
Seven thousand.
Yeah. They're, they're right now, going through the process, uh, you know, they're gonna be building themselves a new building, all that kinda stuff. I think we really should, that's a totally worthwhile thing that they're doing.
Where's it coming from?
And we barely even make a dent in their, in their budget.
Is that General A? Or General B?
Not a way.
Huh?
B.
B?
Part of the youth.
It's part of B.
Yeah.
Playground has got twenty grand in it.
Didn't we reduce that to fifteen?
And listen to all these people saying, you know, it's good, you know, good for the community, all that kinda stuff, that falls into the same category.
Are we still on up here? Yes.
Honestly, we, we haven't used playground funds hardly at all.
No.
Right.
So that, that, you know, if we took that down to, if we took playgrounds in half to seventy-five hundred, which we haven't used that mu, well, we did reduce it, um, which we haven't used that much, then we could increase Harts for Youth.
Okay, Harts for Youth is at twenty-five hundred right now.
So we double it, we go to five grand.
I, I like the seven number.
Seven.
Thousand.
Who else is at twenty-five hundred in there? I guess I'm probably thinking of the two historical societies.
Yeah, yeah, you're thinking of the historical.
Yeah, I don't wanna hurt them either, but I don't wanna affect them.
The two historicals are at thirty-five hundred.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna do this kinda thing, then, you know.
Yeah, well, and then, the other thing is, this is a big year for Harts for Youth.
Well, this is why I didn't want to limit to three options, cause there's, we should look at other things. This is our opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you want me to?
That's why I said, you could have any option you want.
And take it away from playground?
Sure. But I really don't like that either, but I mean, but like what Sandy's saying, if we're not spending it, let's put it where it can be used. I get, that's what I meant.
Forty-five hundred dollars less, so does that bring it to ten-five?
Yeah.
Where is our, where is our stuff for, um, our, oh, regular youth program, okay, there it is. Where's our town youth stuff?
Your what?
I see it now, the, our regular town youth stuff, I see it. Do we have anything? Do we have equipment and things like that for the town youth, or is it just personal services?
I think it's C. Right, for town youth is contractual, C.
Okay, is that that two point four?
Seventy-three. Actually, the contractual is, um, for Redwood Youth, for Harts for Youth, and then there's another contractual, twenty-two, six, fifty-seven. Seventy-three, one oh four, point two point four.
Right.
And B?
Yeah.
Yep. So, okay, all right.
Yeah, I think that playground's down to, down to ten, and I move that five over to Harts for Youth.
So now it's seventy-five hundred for Harts for Youth, seven?
Sure.
Ronnie agrees.
Ronnie agrees, you said?
Yeah, Ronnie just texted me, he said, very good point, if we're going to spend money, let's spend more where it is needed. I'm offering increasing Harts for Youth.
Yeah.
I'm looking at.
So we're taking that out of playgrounds, right? Yeah.
Yes.
And that brings the playgrounds down to ten-five?
Ten, just to ten.
To ten?
Move to ten, move five over.
So now we're, now we're giving them how much?
Seventy-five hundred.
Going up pretty high.
I'd say a nice round number, ten thousand. Whoa.
What? Ten?
Yeah.
No, he's saying ten for playgrounds.
Playground for ten.
Ten for playgrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I mean, it was, if you look back at history, you know, haven't really spent much.
We didn't have a, we didn't have a town youth program, if you look back at history.
And then Harts for Youth is gonna go to seventy-five?
Yes.
All right, well, we're, we've still got, um, twenty-two thousand five hundred for equipment and things like that for the regular town.
Yeah.
Youth organizations, youth programs.
Yeah, I thought, that's not touching any of that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that.
So is that good? Everybody else good with everything else?
Yep.
Okay.
So tomorrow afternoon, when I get back, I'll make those changes, maybe meet with Mike and Brent, and whoever else wants to be. and whoever else wants to be here. Don't you have one that's blue?
Yeah, that's right there.
That's what you're looking for.
Yeah, well, the, that didn't have the General B in it, did it? I think this is just DA and DB.
And not the blue one.
Oh, okay. I didn't get down to that, okay. What's the first you say? Okay.
But when it says final, it's.
Okay.
Final number one.
Okay, well, I looked at the first one, I looked at the second one.
Hopefully, we'll only have final number two.
Just, just to explain one thing briefly is that I realize that if you, if we're gonna adopt a budget, you have to have concrete numbers. You have to have those numbers. If you remember, two years ago, we had a budget hearing, and the numbers changed at the budget hearing.
Yeah.
And all we did to make it happen, which is what we would have done tonight, not, I wasn't trying to pull a fast one on anybody, I was just trying to get this thing moving. What we would have done tonight is we would have taken the exact numbers out of the proposal that you gave, and we would have read the line item of that, of that deal, because I've got a mark right here, what's changed. And we would have read those, and we would have changed them, and we would have had to make a motion to accept that with those numbers. And we did exactly that two years ago.
Yeah.
At the final public hearing, so. I just wanted everybody to realize that, you know, that's why Nicole gave us different options on paper. So that if we wanted to make the decision tonight, I mean, it's, it's fine that, I mean, we've only had these papers for a day. Mike's internet was not working. He didn't get them yesterday or last night. He hasn't seen them. Sandy hasn't had time to review. I spent a bunch of time with, with, uh, Nicole today talking about this. I also had time to go through and write on them and figure out the difference in exactly what they were. So that's, that's why I was, I was prepared to do that, you know, so. Not, not a big deal.
Okay, it's just.
We'll expect the overtime to be reflected in our.
We'll, we'll, we'll improve it.
What?
Yeah, you better call over to your place and get them on overtime.